Let me call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for Tuesday, June 5th. Let me remind everyone who will address the board tonight to be sure and sign in on the clipboard on this table and make sure your microphone is turned on so the folks at home can hear you. By way of announcement, our next planning board meeting after tonight will be June 19th, 2018, at 7:00 PM in this room. Let me appoint Nelson into a voting position for Mike Redding. And with that, I'll turn to the Planning and Zoning Administrators' Report. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet you'll have a letter, memorandum dated tonight for regional impact for the Bowers Landing of Merrimack Project, which is item number three on tonight's agenda. Staff is recommending that the board determine it is not of regional impact as it does meet the criteria from our regional impact standards.
What's the will of the board with respect to the determination of regional impact for Bowers Landing?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we agree with the staff's recommendation that this is not an item that has a regional impact recommendate, regional impact.
What's our second, Alistair's motion? Second by Nelson Disco. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So 4-0-0 to uphold the staff's recommendation. Anything else, Tim?
Just a reminder for all of you that the next planning board meeting on June 19th, as you had requested, will be the all-electronic packet meeting. There will not be mailed out packets. We will scan and provide PDFs of all the information that would have been in the packet. So we're asked that you bring tablet, laptop, or your device of choice, or we will have a few copies of the packet printed out for those who choose to go the old-school way. But this is just a first try at it. I know the board had asked us to give it a shot at the second meeting in June, so just a reminder.
Thank you for the reminder and thank you for giving it a shot. Let me also take this opportunity to make another announcement I should have made earlier. Item six on our agenda, Merrimack Parcel LLC, as the applicant and Merrimack Premium Outlets as the owner, has requested a continuance, which I would anticipate that the board will likely grant. So if you're here in the audience tonight to talk about that one, you probably need not stick around. And with that...
The only other thing I had was, right now, under Other Items of Concern, we have an extension request. We do have representative from Fieldstone here who is asked, if possible, to move it up to this point in the agenda if you would so choose to do so.
Okay. I certainly have no objection to reordering that item on the agenda and dealing with it now.
Do you want to post Neil for Lynn?
Neil's not an alternative.
Oh, yeah. Right. Okay. I forgot.
Thanks for the help, though. So what Tim had mentioned is a bit of business we intended to handle under discussion. Possible action regarding other items of concern is an extension request for, which was in your packet, for William Listocka as the applicant and land of Goshen LLC as the owner. And it's an extension of our final approval that we've already issued for the subdivision plan for the 12-lot cluster subdivision at 6 Watkins Road in the R1 Residential and Oqfer Conservation Districts, Wellhead Protection Area, tax map 4C lot 449. And my understanding is that the need for the request is that the state of New Hampshire permitting process is taken longer than the applicant had originally requested. And if we grant such a request, it would extend them to what, December?
December 5th.
December 5, 2018. What's the will of the board? Nelson?
I move to postpone that to...
Grant the extension.
You mean to grant an extension?
To grant the extension.
I make a motion to grant the extension for the Listocka project to December 15th.
December 5th.
December 5th.
2018. Is there a second for...
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion by Nelson, second by Alistair. We've got to remember to call out the names because we don't have our minute taker here tonight.
Yep.
Any discussion on that item? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's 5-0-0. No opposed, no abstaining.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll deal with other items of concern later on in the agenda, but we've got that one ticked off of our list of things to do. Anything else under the Planning and Zoning Administrators' Report?
I do not have anything else.
Okay. That brings us to item three on the agenda, which is...
Could I make a request?
Of course.
Is this time to make a request of the planning and zoning, of the director of...
That guy.
I understand he gave a very interesting presentation to the school board recently about the effects of our, in the Q housing elements, and what their effect might be on the school. And I would ask that, next time you're here, just to give that presentation to the planning board.
If the board's interested, I certainly could do that.
I think it would be something of interest to the planning board, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I don't have any experience with the presentation or know more of it than what you've said, but it sounds interesting.
I can give you a quick two-second rundown. All I did was I took the various residential projects that are in the works or approved by the board and go through the process of utilizing the standards for school-age children multipliers from the Hampshire Housing Finance to come up with a basic range of what we could expect for school enrollment out of all those projects. We've got somewhere in the neighborhood of about 1,000 potential units coming over the next several years, and the numbers, depending on the type of unit, whether it's single-family or multifamily, have different impacts in terms of school-age kids. I also gave the same presentation a couple of weeks ago to the school district leadership team, the superintendent, the assistant superintendents, the principals of all the schools, and everybody else as well.
Thank you for the short synopsis, and I agree with Nelson. I would love to see the full presentation at some point in the future. It is always good information to know, but...
Could I ask, Mr. Chairman, was that actually done televised?
The school board one was televised. Do you be able to find that on YouTube? I can let you know what the date was.
Thank you. I'd be grateful. We can look at it.
I'd still rather see it here so I could ask you questions.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else for the Planning and Zoning Administrators' Report? All right. If not, we'll move on to item three, which is the Bowers Landing of Merrimack LLC as the applicant and owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a site plan to construct 65 detached multifamily residential units in Phase Six of the Harris Pond planned unit development. The parcels located off Bowers Landing Drive in the I-1 Industrial and Oqfer Conservation Districts, tax map 1D, lot 1-4. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. This is a project I think most of the board is familiar with. This is in between DW Highway and Manchester Street, multi-phase, multifamily project. Original buildings done were garden-style multifamily units. The most recent phase was done in a multifamily, single-detached unit style that, as we understand, are selling extraordinarily well. This Phase Six was originally designed to be, it was originally designed to be the garden-style multifamily buildings. They're coming forward now with a proposal for 65 detached multifamily in the same style as the last phase that they recently completed. The applicant is here tonight to give an overview, give you an idea where things are at. This has been sent to peer review. We do not yet have the comments from peer review, so our recommendation is to listen to the presentation, determine if the application is complete, and then continue out to the month of July.
Excellent. Thank you, Tim. Before you get started, let me get you to set your easel on this side because the cameras don't catch that side as well. And you can take the, yeah, bring the mic with you when you're doing the explanation, but take your time. Don't rush. I want to make sure that the folks at home can see it and we can see it as well. Right about there. Perfect. We'll bug you at the end to get you to sign in on the clipboard.
All right. Good evening. My name is Matt Peterson with Hillside Design Group, here representing the Towns-in-Place project that's in front of you tonight. As Tim kind of just gave you the overview that I was going to give here at the beginning, but this is the next phase. As most of you know, we came with Crown Point, which was 50 units back about three years ago. That is located in the northeast corner of the property over here, off of Jared's Way. We're down to about three or four units on there. It's been a very successful project. This piece here, which is map 1D-1-4, it's approximately 30 acres. We originally, and if you've gone out there, this has kind of been the staging area for about maybe 10, 12 years now since this project has been going on, there's actually a sewer that was built in here for the garden-style apartments that were, I have an old plan actually that shows the approval. It was three to four garden-style apartments, 137 units in this location here. So we're left with 137 units for this future development. We'd like to do the 65 that's in front of you tonight. We envision up in here, the last 72 would probably be annexed out with the existing kind of garden styles that are up there. But really, I mean, at this point, we're not sure. We're just kind of seeing how the market's going. If he could have done all singles, he would have, but as you can see, I've run out of space, so. And we've tried to make something nice. We really have a nice product going, so we really didn't want to squish them all in there and make it look ugly. We really came up with two nice little neighborhoods here. We have three kind of going that was up there now. It's kind of nice. It lets people have their own areas and their own units. Now, going through the existing additions plan a little bit for you, I know you guys have 11-by-17 plans with you there. I'm wondering, does that mean the 1850 sheet, 11-by-17s, I was one meeting off not having to make all those copies? So you guys have the whole set. So if you turn to sheets two, two, three, four, and five, these are going to outline, show you guys outline all of our soils that were mapped, actually, two months ago. The wetlands were mapped back in November. We show the test pits that we've done out here for our drainage. We also show on sheet four the existing sewer line that I said was going to be removed. I'm sorry, sheet five. Kind of goes cross-country right now. Kind of gives you an idea, if you've been out there, kind of where the gravel and all that kind of is down in this location. Site plans are next. Site plan, as you know, is going to outline the building locations, our roadway centerline, curbing on this here, we have batuminous curbing. We also have sidewalk shown for our cul-de-sacs. This first one here, Towns-in-Place, it's about 1,000 feet of road, about 900 feet that comes in around. This one is actually one of the nicest locations we have, as most of the parcels, as Tim is shaking his head, we've had ledge and blasting and everything else. This road here comes in at 1.5% down to a low point, goes back up at 1.5% around the cul-de-sac and back. It's really nice. Came out clean, fit into the location. Again, don't have as much of the earth removal that we've had on previous projects. The second one, if you turn to sheet 10, this one we did a little bit differently, but still very nice grades. We come in at 2% of our platform here. We came down at 3% to our low point at the bottom. We came back up at 3% to about the curve in the road here, and then 1.5% across again. So again, we've really tried to make this development a lot different than previously ones. The engineering is pretty clean as far as the grades of the roads, the topo. This piece, because the back half drops about 15 to 20 feet, we made all the units on the backside. I'll show more in the grading plan, but we made all these units on the backside walkouts, and that really helped again with the grade here. So we really did a lot of value engineering. We actually started this back in October, did a full design of this project, gave it to the applicant, to take to his contractor. They did a whole bit of this. We actually bought 90,000 cubic yards of material coming in. It was too much to, the project didn't make sense. We dropped it down to 45 by making some of these value engineering and moving the roads and stuff like that as we went through the project. If you turn to sheet 12, these are kind of the main, obviously, guts of the projects that we have here. The drainage came into two. I met with the, just for the board to understand, I met with Conservation Commission last night. They didn't have time, obviously, to get you a memo for tonight. I didn't ask them to. We had just submitted this a week ago. It was only our first hearing. But they approved it last night with two comments. If you had seen it there, they want low phosphates, and they want us to test the soils before the contractor puts the material down, so we agreed to both those. Those are fine. Everything else had what they were looking for, as far as erosion control and the evasive plants she looked for and stuff like that that she had gone through. So the first one, this Towns-in-Place, again, like I said, we're draining at 1.5% down to low point. All the water's coming back to it, and then we're bringing the water just to this one detention basin. One of the problems, obviously, we've all had the last 10 to 15 years, is contractors not putting the detention in first or having multiple detention all throughout the site that they've got to maintain. We're trying to minimize that as much as possible, make this as simple as possible, basically, for them to install it. So we have one location, we have a forebay, and then we have a secondary infiltration, detention basin that's set up to meet AOT requirements and stuff like that. This all went up to the state last week. It's been accepted as complete, and we'll wait for comments and stuff like that from them. I've got numbers and stuff like that, but this may be too much to get into that kind of stuff. But if you have comments, I can walk you through those. If you turn to the next sheet, which is 13, Toby Circle, again, Toby Circle all drains down to approximately this 10850, which is right kind of at the curve, and then obviously all this drains back down to that point. Collect it, again, forebay, and then again into a detention-retention type pond that's set up here. Each one's a little different. If you read the notes, this one's got peystone in it, the other one's got a sand bottom. They've all got details in the plans to meet AOT and stuff like that. Again, I'll wait for comments to come back, but we did the test pits. We believe we met all the requirements and submitted accordingly. Utility plans are pretty standard here. We obviously have underground electric, we have water and gas in the road, and we also have sewer. I know one of the comments is that I've got to talk to Water about updating my letter from '08 that said they had availability, but we've already sent these plans out to Penachuck, obviously with them being close neighbors and stuff, for reviews to make sure that they didn't have any comments. So we'll address that and get that back to the staff.
Does your order come from Penachuck or from NPD?
We've included plans in here for review for erosion control. We've gone a little different. The silt sock is something we've done a lot different than the silt fence these days, a little bit easier to maintain, put in, make sure it's working the way it's supposed to be working. I like it for my sites. Some people do, some people don't, but that's what we've put in here for that. We've got our construction entrance, we've got our rip, you know, jute matting on the slopes and stuff like that. So again, meeting all of AOTs, all of your requirements for the town. Left the other plans.
Well, Matt's bringing that over. Just a reminder for the board that despite the fact that this is single-family style development, it's still considered a multifamily condominium because all of these structures are all on the same single lot. They're not individual lots for each of the homes. So this is a site plan, not a subdivision for that purpose, and it's considered multifamily.
Thanks, Tim.
Lastly, the plan set has the landscaping, lighting incorporated. We've proposed 163 trees, 123 shubs. We have street trees throughout it. I think if you've driven through this site, we tried to do a nice job. So we'll let staff review that, make sure we've met all the requirements of the town. Again, and then I've got details and stuff like that that I don't think I need to go through tonight, but I can open it up for any questions or comments.
Thank you. I think Tim kind of led into one of the questions. So as a condominium, these are private roads?
Yes.
Are there any contemplation in the future of proposing them to become town roads?
Yeah, no.
Okay. Just changes this design standard. Alistair, you look up.
Yeah. Can I, on some of your pictures, your plans, and I'll just start with the colored one is the easiest, you show what I take to be sloped granite curve. At the end there, it says sloped granite curve. Are you proposing that Toby Circle is a circle, or are you proposing it's a dead end? Is that...
Well, Toby Circle comes in and circles all the way around in that.
But it's a, so there's...
It's a complete, yes.
There is something there which says sloped granite curve there.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like a crosswalk, so I just wanted to go there.
That's what I'm trying to understand. Is that a crosswalk?
It says painted six-foot-wide crosswalk. I'm just trying to see where you saw granite curbing.
So in other words, what you're really saying is the sidewalk continues there, and you're going to have a crosswalk there so that people can still walk, effectively continuing the sidewalk around the site.
So let me just fill you. So this is batuminous curbing with a batuminous sidewalk. Then it'll come then to a concrete pad for handicap, which will then have those pads in it.
With the pads in, yeah.
Then it'll come to a crosswalk that'll be painted, and then back up to the other side. And we have sidewalk all the way through the project.
That's what I wanted to be sure, but thank you.
But it's not vertical, it's batuminous, and then, yes, it's protected.
Thank you so much for the answer.
So along the same lines, along Towns-in-Place, it looks like the sidewalks continue along the northeast side up to number 61. And then the folks that are in the cul-de-sac would sort of find their way to the sidewalks by walking in the street or something like that. Maybe think about extending that sidewalk a couple of houses further so it's getting to those last few houses at the end of the cul-de-sac. Is that something that, engineering-wise, is manageable?
Yeah, it's absolutely something. Let me just give you a history of why I did it the way I did it, but I have no problem moving it a couple of homes. On the previous one that we did on the 50, we had no sidewalk all the way through the permitting process, and one of the approval at the very end was to put sidewalk in. And we had talked about walking through there, and we ended it on that project at this point. So it's built to there at that point, so I just continued the same thing through. But if you'd like me to continue a couple of buildings, I'm not, it's not the end of the world.
I know that the traffic around circles is pretty small.
Most people are walking in the streets anyway when they're this traffic-wise.
Yeah, it's low traffic and low demand, but I don't know. It seemed to me that it kind of stopped abruptly.
Yep. That's fine.
It wasn't a big deal. Nelson?
I agree with you on the sidewalk ending there. That caught my eye, too. I also wanted to be sure that we had sidewalk along, what is it called, Bowers Landing Drive, all the way to Manchester Street. And I think it's shown, it's shown in one plan and not on another, and I wanted to be sure that that was part of the sidewalk planning here. Are you with me on that, Matt?
Yes, I am. So, first of all, you were the one that required the sidewalk on the last project. We fought all the way through to the end, and so, yes, I understand you. What we did on this for right now, and I got no problem putting notes on the plan and stuff like that, let me just get to this page. Because I have concepts right now, which I can bring to another hearing or show on what this future may be up here, and I've been told that they're going to release me right after this is approved to do the next phase, so they only wanted to build it to this point till the next phase went, but I could show it now and just say as part of the next phase or something like that. But yes, it's going to connect.
I wanted you to connect Manchester Street.
Manchester Street's up this way. I'm sorry, this one already connects and goes out. Oh, you're right. My bad. This one is the one that's not connected, actually. Manchester Street.
Okay, one plan shows it in another one.
Manchester Street is older.
From Towns and...
So right here, it's already, so at Manchester Street, it comes in, comes to, we're going to put a crosswalk, and it's already, it's already built in there on the plane.
I'm looking at the aerial photo now. It goes all the way to Manchester Street currently.
Good.
Sorry, I misunderstood streets.
Other comments or questions by members of the board?
Yeah, I would have a few more things. There's 65 units proposed here in the two, in the two projects, right? And what's the typical square footage on one unit?
About 1,400. 1,400 square feet.
1,400, okay. Thank you. And the sidewalk comments, I second what Bob said. I'd like to see it go a little further on Towns and... Is there a, what sort of amenities come with this project? Is there a clubhouse, a club membership in an existing clubhouse, or some sort of tie-in with the...
It ties into the clubhouse that's in the other phase that was previously approved.
That's what I was hoping.
Where is that? Orient, meet where, how far that is from the...
Between Hanaway and Jared Circle, Mr. Chairman. Oh, I see.
See this building right here?
Yeah.
That's the clubhouse right there.
So the folks in this new development will have the ability to use that space?
We're still going, you have to go through the association, get the sign-off, so I'm not going to sit here tonight and say yes, but we are going through the process with them to get them to get all that.
And they can walk there.
And then we also, just so you know, we also kind of split up a little passive recreation. We put a recreation area down here that's going to be more like benches and that kind of stuff, so maybe we'd have a couple, because this kind of ties to those trails that head off, so we thought that this would be a good place to park, and people can go do some nature stuff, and some mountain bouncing.
Yeah. Okay. Another question. The general topography here slopes to the south, is that correct, on these two?
Yes.
And the sewer line has to go to the north, is that correct?
The sewer...
Sewer, yeah.
And you'll see it right here. So sewer is gravity flowing all the way down to a pump station that's here.
Oh, pump station, okay.
And then this half here is also coming down. This project is coming gravity across to this pump station. You'll see this 20-foot-wide gravel drive that I have to construct with the sewer that's coming through here. And then this is force-mating up to Bowers Landing. We do have the first, I think, I want to say we got 20 or 18 that we got on gravity onto Bowers, so we're going to have that be the first phase, and then the pump station would be for the rest of them.
Okay. That's all been gone through with the wastewater treatment, folks?
It's being processed, it's being reviewed today.
It's part of the review, okay. All right. And one last question. Yeah, is there gas in this?
Yeah.
Gas heated, yeah. Okay. That's all I have right at the moment, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Disco. Anybody else have questions for the applicant? Tim?
I just have one regarding bedrooms per unit. Is there a set number for each unit? Because I know we've run into some problem, well, not problems, but some concerns and issues with the previous phase where they were all designated as two-bedroom units, people looking to do three. So I just wanted to make sure that there's clear guidance on the plan so that when Building Department starts issuing occupancy requirements, they actually know how many bedrooms are allowed in each unit.
Right now, I mean, everything on Phase Two is two-bedroom units. So as far as I know, that's all we've built in a phase right there.
Yeah. Thank you.
So these are going to be twos or threes? Because the memo says threes.
Yeah, I saw the memo there, but my architecturals are two.
Okay. So they are, they are twos or they are...
They're currently two-building, two-bedroom units, yes.
That's what you're asking for approval?
That's what we're asking.
Okay. Could I ask one more? I forgot. There was this drainage shown going off the site at the very south end, right there.
Yep. So the abutting property down there is owned by a Southwood entity, and then the next piece is the Penachuck land. So there's kind of this sliver.
Southwood Corp. is the Penachuck...
Oh, is it? Oh, I didn't know that, then. Okay, then, it's about Penachuck Water.
Penachuck.
Penachuck Water.
Okay.
And they have these plans to review. So if they have any problems or comments, they'll let us know.
You've calculated the amount of, you're going to increase probably the flow onto their property, is that correct?
That would, no, no.
Yeah, no, we can't do that anymore.
You can't do that by regulation.
Well, that's what I thought.
So we have, we have twenty-five-point-five-six CFS coming into this pond, and we have one-point-eight-three coming out.
Yeah.
So we're doing some infiltration in here, we have some that comes out, the outlet structure and the overflow and stuff like that. So, no, we're decreasing. On all the points, we have four points of interest on this project. This is one, east, the north, and then there was one on the west side. We've decreased the flow on two, ten, twenty-five years' storm, so.
Okay.
And it's all up to state for review. If I miss something, though, don't let me know.
I'll let you know.
Thank you, thank you.
Other comments or questions? So my understanding in terms of where we're at tonight is that you've got, we're still in the process of getting some peer review and some review by our local departments. And so I think we're able to receive the information from you. We can open it up to the public to see what they think. But ultimately, we'll end up considering whether to continue this to a future meeting. However, I want to make sure that you're getting the feedback from us that you need as to anything that you have questions about what our opinion of, yes.
It's pretty clean. We didn't ask for any waivers. I think we're, yeah, there's not a lot with this project, so I'm good.
Given the experience we've had with the other project, from staff perspective, this one's been a pretty easy review because we're very familiar with the way it's been set up in the previous project.
And seeing what you guys have built out there so far, you guys certainly have earned the reputation for doing it the right way.
Thank you.
Do you want to make a motion to accept this for review before we throw it over, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I think Tim probably would love us to follow the procedures the right way. What's the will of the board?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we agree, we take, accept that this matter is, we have all the information we need, and we make, accept it for full review.
Nelson's mo, I mean, Alistair's motion is to find it complete. Second?
Second.
Second by Nelson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five-zero-zero to find that it's complete. Are there any abutters or citizens who came to talk about this project tonight or wish to weigh in? Seeing none, consider that public hearing closed. And with that, when do you think that we'll be ready with a peer review and all that stuff to have another look at this?
Our recommendation, we only have one meeting in July because of the July Fourth holiday, so Ju, July seventeen would be the date we'd recommend continuing, so.
Sound reasonable?
Yep.
Ask the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue this matter till July the seventeenth, planning board meeting at seven PM in this room with no further notice to abutters.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
Second.
Second by Nelson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five-zero-zero. So we'll see you in about a month and a half.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you for the presentation. It's a good-looking project. Item number four on the agenda is Hoyle Tanner and Associates, Inc. as the applicant and OVP Management, Inc. as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of waiver of full site plan review for modifications to the two previously approved standalone restaurant buildings, the parcels located at three-sixty Daniel Webster Highway and the C-two General Commercial in Oxford Conservation Districts, Tax Map forty-three Lot One. And as has become my habit on this particular project, I will recuse myself from its consideration. Turn the gavel over to our esteemed vice chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your passing it over. When you're ready, sir, please continue.
Sure, is this on?
Well, if it's a bright green light, it's on. If it's not a bright green light, it ain't.
All right, good evening. My name is Bill Davidson from Hoyle Tanner.
It's not on.
Feels like I was just here not too long ago.
I don't think you're on, Bill. Try again.
I got my green light.
Try again.
No, maybe a little closer to you, then.
Is that better?
Thank you.
That's much better.
All right, sorry about that. Bill Davidson, Hoyle Tanner. We were here a few months ago for a small ATM revision, and hopefully everybody's driven by the site and see it's vastly improved from what it was. They're working diligently on that. My understanding is that some of the lease, the lease spaces are going to be open July one, so, pretty soon. So what we're here for today is there was two standalone buildings, B and C, on a previously approved plan. We are modifying those a little bit. And, you know, this, this project's kind of like a living, breathing project. It's changing as they get people signed up for leases and things like that. They couldn't have known all of this in the beginning. But we had on Building B, we had four thousand square feet. We're now reducing that to three thousand square feet. And then on Building C, which was a small six-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot, that's now going to be seventeen hundred square feet. Those are both slated as restaurants right now, so there's an increase of fifty square feet for restaurant from what we had shown previously. We were able to reconfigure the area on Building B and gain four parking spaces, which more than makes up for the fifty square feet. Tom, you might be interested that the, the Building B could possibly be a bank. If it is a bank, obviously that ATM will be needed in that location there.
That was certainly going to be one of my questions, thank you.
So that's, that's still a possibility. My understanding is they're having a talking.
You mean there's a bank that isn't in the Merrimack so far?
Yes.
B of A left, so.
So really, that's what we're, that's what we're asking for, is these two, two small revisions to those. We've revised the center. The biggest revision, which still isn't big, would be Building C. It's, it's changed shape quite a bit. We have a little bit more of a area. We've reduced some parking in that area and opened it up and had a patio, as well as a large green space. We did, I did receive the memorandum from, from Robert, no, it was actually from you, Tim, that in the landscaping area on Building C, there is a small, it looks like a curb line. What actually that is is a seating wall. So there's a small eighteen-inch wall that separates that out. So we can, it's, it's not labeled on the plans, we can do that. And we also received a letter from DPW. There was some erosion down in the, in the southern corner there, where they had not finished with their curbing to go around. They've since just very recently completed it today. So that's all tied in together now. They, they cleaned up the loam in that area as well. So that's been taken care of, and I believe, I believe the owner has sent an email with photos showing that. So that should take care of the DPW concerns. That's really all I have for revisions, if anybody has any questions.
Well, thank you for the presentation. I throw it open to my colleagues. Has anybody got any questions? Nelson, you have, by the look of you.
One or two. The area west of Building C is kind of shown just sort of a blank area there. Is that what you were talking about, outdoor seating? Is that what, you know what I mean? It's a blank space on the plans I have.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yep.
So on Building C, there's a, there's a gray area around this, the building here. That is going to be the outdoor seating. It's more of a patio. And then there's a great, there's still a large green space area in this way, in this area. If you remember from the last plan, we had double-loaded parking here. We were able to shift this over and reduce one side of the parking, so that opened up a lot of green space and open area in this area surrounding Building C.
So that will be green space?
This, this, well, what's green shown on this plan will be green. This gray area around here will be patio that they'll have with a small seating table.
My plan shows the gray, but doesn't show the green.
Well.
Well, that's okay. If I understand, I just wanted to understand what it was. And that little L-shaped device in the middle of it, is that?
That's the seating wall that I was, that I was referring to.
The seating wall?
Seating wall, so it'll be like an eighteen-inch-high wall
Yeah.
that people can sit on.
Oh, okay. And otherwise landscaped, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, and then I have one other question.
We've got hindrance all around.
Chair, I'll find the other questions. Oh, yeah. The sidewalk in this area, you have, of course, a walk all along the front of the buildings. Does that sidewalk connect out to Route Three at any place on the sidewalk?
No, it does not. No, it does not.
That's too bad.
That was a big part of the original discussion.
We talked about that at great length, I recall. There was all sorts, but it was not, didn't happen, Mr. Chairman. You have anything else, Nelson?
I have no further questions.
Neil, have you had anything? Tom? You, you were obviously going to raise something with the ATM.
Well, I was, but I think you answered it. If you put a bank in there, there's no need particularly for the ATM, and you'll just not build it?
Correct.
Or take it out if the bank goes in at a later date or something, or?
Yeah, I think they'll know, I think they'll know prior to being it.
Yeah, before they spend the money. I was interested in what a four-thousand-square-foot restaurant would look like, but obviously that's not happening at this point, so.
Okay, well, can I first suggest, we have a couple of things before we throw it open to the public. We need some comments on acceptance, and perhaps we should also take the fact that the applicant has requested a waiver of full site plan review. I'm all ears.
I'll move to waive full site plan review.
Subject on the basis that?
That it's?
Did you want to accept it first?
Do you want to accept it first?
Well, all right, let's accept it. I was.
All right, Mr. Disco has made a motion to accept this matter for further review. Can I have a second? Thank you, Neil. So the matter is to accept this matter for discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's four-nil-nil. No, nobody objected. And can we now take your motion for the waiver as well, Mr. Disco?
Yes, I'll now wait, ask to waiver the, the full site plan review.
On the basis that?
On the basis that this is a minor change to an existing plan.
Strict conformity with the proposal.
Strict conformity would be unnecessary hardship.
Thank you, thank you.
Right, could I have a second for Nelson's motion on that? Thank you, Neil. So that's also been proposed and seconded. All in favor, say.
Mr. Chairman, before we get into that, one of the questions I raised in my memo that would probably be good to address now is whether or not the board feels you need to act on an additional waiver for parking, given the original plan did receive a waiver for the overall number of parking spaces. There have been enough parking spaces added here to accommodate the additional fifty square feet of restaurant. So the question to the board is, are you comfortable with that being continued through this plan, or do you feel it needs a new waiver request and motion tonight? My recommendation is to include it with the waiver of full site plan.
I, I would be happy to do that. Are you happy to have that added to the waiver?
I think so, if I understood him correctly.
Essentially, there was, the, the waiver was granted for parking in the original redevelopment project for the, for the parcel.
Yeah, and how, how much was that waiver?
Oh, you'd have to tell me. He'll probably have it off top of his head. I can look it really quick here.
Well, part of that was predicated on the different uses and the potential for that one becoming a bank would, would be a common use.
Which would help, so.
Which would help, I'm sorry, I was thinking it would hurt, actually.
Nope, it would actually be better for us if, because the, the largest use that we have parking-wise is the restaurants. The financial institution is much lower threshold. So we had originally, if I may, Tim?
Sure.
Originally, we had three-hundred-and-fifty-nine spaces. We now have three-sixty-three, I believe it was. The required, based on the parking calculations in the town of Merrimack regs, is four-seventy-eight. So it was a, it was a substantial, a substantial reduction, but the, the client, it's operated that way for a number of years, and the client felt very comfortable with what we had there.
And again, for purpose of this plan, we're actually adding parking spaces that weren't there as part of the original.
Correct.
So you're not making it less conforming, you're making it closer to conforming. So I, I personally would be comfortable with the original waiver continuing to move and enforce with this project without the need to act on it again, but that's still a decision the board can make.
Mr. Disco?
Well, let's leave it off, then. Let's just make it simple and make this a waiver of full site plan review, is what my motion is.
And you second that, Neil? Thank you. May all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's four-nil-nil. So we'll be basically saying, okay, go ahead. So I'm, I'm going to throw it open to the public.
Before you do that, I just want to understand, your comment was you didn't want to include the waiver here, so we're not going to do a waiver extension? We're just going to assume that it stays the same as it was?
The waiver is the same as already previously granted.
I just want, essentially that there's no need to grant a new waiver because you're becoming more conforming.
We're still up by twenty percent.
Closer to what, but it's not by much, but it's still becoming closer to what's required.
But the point being, that we waived it once, and he's made it slightly better, very slightly better, therefore we shouldn't really need to do it again. All right, I'll continue, throw it open to anybody in the public who would like to make any comments on this. I think, speaking for myself, I certainly think the site's looking better, but I don't know if anybody else wants to offer any thoughts. It's the old, sir, it's, I can explain it if you want to come forward. It's the old Shores site where Shores used to be, and if you drive down Route Three now, you'll see it's, it looks, initially looked like a disaster area, but it is now beginning to look like a development area.
I got you. Okay, I just couldn't figure out what the heck it was.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does anybody else want to offer any comments? In which case I'll close the public hearing, and then I'm seeking for a motion for acceptance of agreement of this project.
One other question?
Oh, yes, please, Tom.
This, this new layout you have for the, the larger, the Building B, shows a drive-through area? Sorry. Shows a drive-through area, is that right?
Yep, there was a, there was a drive-through previously on the, on the last one.
Oh, there was? I thought it was a.
Are you happy then, Tom?
Talk to him later. Yeah, that's fine, thanks.
All right. Anybody want to make a final motion then, please? Mr. Disco, I'm looking at you again.
Well, I will make a motion to, to approve the changes to this site plan as requested. Yeah, following the recommendations of the staff.
Memo from Mr. Thompson dated May the thirtieth, twenty-eighteen.
Thank you.
Neil, I'm looking at you.
Yes, I second that.
Then the motion has a proposer and a seconder. All in favor, say. Tom, you can't go, we need a quorum. No, Tom, don't worry, these things happen.
That was my son, I couldn't just ignore him.
No, I don't blame you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, four-nil-nil. Thank you for your presentation.
Yep, thank you very much, appreciate it.
And please pass on. I think the place is beginning to look quite nice.
Excellent.
And I welcome the chairman back to his job.
Thank you, Alistair, for doing that. And with that, we'll turn to the next item on our agenda, which is FMR Realty LP FMR. Merrimack Realty Trust is the applicant and owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of a waiver of full site plan review to allow for a mobile automotive service and repair use, which is an automotive maintenance service trailer on the Fidelity Investments campus. The parcels are located at Two Contra Way and One Spartan Way in the I-two Industrial and Oxford Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, Tax Map Three-C Lot One-ninety-one and Tax Map Two-C Lot One-thirteen. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In your package, you have a memo from Kelly Shamo regarding this project. This is a proposal that was actually in front of the zoning board a week or so ago, where they were successful in obtaining a special exception to allow the automotive service use in the industrial district. This particular project is proposing that, it's actually as a result of a service request that was brought to our attention, that is a company called Zippity Cars that services benefit of, for the benefit of Fidelity's employees, to do some minor automotive maintenance, oil changes and things like that on their cars in the Fidelity campus while the folks are still at work. This was not one of the uses that was obviously contemplated or permitted during the other phases of the Fidelity project, so it's here tonight, following their zoning board approval, to seek a waiver of full site plan to allow this use to be continued on the site. And I'll turn it over for the presentation. They can, I'm sure, give a little better detail as to exactly what they're proposing to do here.
Thank you, Tim. Don't forget to introduce yourself and then tell us what's going on.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's John Sokel from Hinckley Allen.
I'm here on behalf of Fidelity Investments with Robin Gottschall, who is in-house counsel at Fidelity. And I think Timothy summarized it fairly accurately. All we're really requesting approval to do is to have a specialized, customed trailer come onto the parking lot, existing pay with parking lot, six to eight times a month. And in that trailer, Fidelity employees can have oil changes, detailing, minor automotive repairs done. It leaves at the end of the day, it's completely self-contained, it's only for Fidelity employees, and it's parked while it's there at a Fidelity parking lot. So what we're really looking to do is to just designate the area on the site plan where the trailer will be parked when it's servicing Fidelity employees.
Excellent, thank you for the quick presentation. My initial thought when I saw this was, what a cool benefit for employees.
It's quite popular, actually.
Yeah, I can imagine.
Folks are very upset that it has disappeared and are counting the days till, and keeping their fingers crossed that it may come back.
Certainly see what we can do to take care of that business today. So the, the trailer is, I assume like the tools and equipment and those cars are actually not pulled into the trailer for service, or they actually, they're in there?
They go up, it's fully self-contained.
Okay.
The cars are repaired inside the trailer.
Oh, interesting, that's very different than what I had imagined, and it also helps kind of answer some questions about what would happen if an oil spill or something like that, because it's all contained inside the trailer and all of that. Spill kits and that sort of thing are in the trailer somewhere for those kinds of?
We have Ed Warren, who's the founder and CEO of Zippity Cars, who'd be happy to answer any technical questions like that. I think he's better able than we are.
Please do, just grab that microphone right there in front of you and introduce yourself for the record, on the record.
Hello, everyone, I'm Ed Warren, CEO and co-founder of Zippity. So yes, the, it is, I do want to clarify, it is a trailer that is big enough so you can drive the car up inside, it has fold outsides, so everything is fully self-contained inside the unit, so nothing is happening outside of the unit.
So on a typical day there, how many cars would you see?
So typically, totally depends on the work we're doing. If it's light jobs, we can do more than 10, up to 15. If it's big jobs, then it can be six, something like that.
What, other than oil changes are big jobs?
We can do, we can do brakes, full brake work, there's a lift inside the trailer, so you drive it inside, you lift it up, you can pull off the wheels, do tire rotations, brakes, really, we focus on preventative work, so not complex jobs, you know, we're never going to do, we're never going to change a transmission, we're not going to pull a motor out of a vehicle, but it's all the stuff in your kind of recurring maintenance schedule in your vehicle.
Interesting. Thank you for that.
Can I ask, presumably therefore, there must somewhere in the vehicle be a tank, so that anything that drops?
Yes.
From where the car's sitting, drops into a tank?
It is, well, so we, we actually, yes, we, first we have a full vinyl floor sealed across the bottom, and then we also have both a pan for catching anything that comes in, that immediately gets put into our storage tanks. We only hold enough oil for that day, so we are not storing oil, it is not, you know, a full month's worth. We have a partnership with Advance Auto Parts, and we go and drop it off with them each day, and we actually store the trailer there overnight, so.
So you store it where? Could I, sorry, Mr.?
The trailer is, we actually park at Advance Auto Parts locations in the evenings, we have a partner, supply chain partnership with them, and we drop off our oil there. So we are never bringing significant quantities of oil onsite. It's all, it's just what we need to do that day, and then it goes back.
Interesting, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Other comments or questions of either the?
No, I think he's answered my questions. I was concerned about weather and how they would deal with that, but it sounds like you're pretty well covered and...
The sides fold out and then there's vinyl enclosures, so it is, it's heated, air-conditioned, it's a full, fully self-contained.
Year-round and, yeah.
We were, we were there December when it was 10 degrees.
How large are the trailers?
So they're eight and a half feet wide by 26 feet long.
And then when the sides are folded out, it takes the spaces, probably parking spaces on both sides?
Correct. So Fidelity typically gives us two parking spots end to end, and we fit nicely inside that footprint.
Okay, interesting. Other comments or questions? Tim?
Let Tom go first, but I have a couple of things just to add from different things that've come in post-memo.
Sure, Tom.
So the only connection you need is for electricity to the?
We, we come with a little generator, so we don't need electric.
So you're totally unconnected.
We're completely self-contained, yeah. And we use low decibel equipment, so it is, you know, you can't, everything's under 50 decibels, 55 decibels.
Okay. Is there any reason to choose one side over the other? Any particular reason? The two are listed here.
Fidelity prefers option one because it's more remote, and there'd be less, any opportunity for any interference with other employee parking.
In terms of what action we might take, Tim, does it matter? Do we need to specify a location, or can we say it's just?
No, this is really more of an approval of the use, knowing it's a mobile use, just the permission of that use to take place within the campus, I think is more essentially what the board is doing here.
Yeah.
The locations aren't really, I've never really looked at this as being a location-specific more than it is making sure the notes on the new plan indicate that this use is allowed to take place within the parking area.
Yeah, if they don't have any utility connections, or oil, or spills, or anything to deal with with that, because it's all contained, I don't think we even want to specify a parking space and do whatever you want. You've got lots of spaces.
Just to my mind, it's definitely, you operate the site, you say where it goes, it's your private site.
Yeah, I mean unless there was some kind of infrastructure that had to be built for it. Tim, what was the?
I had a couple of things. First was Merrimack Village District, obviously with this being in a wellhead, was concerned about the spills, which I think has been well explained here. They were of the opinion that it should be a full site plan and not grant the waiver of the full site plan review. My staff, and I believe the board, based on the presentation we've heard here tonight, I think, I'm extra, I'm totally comfortable with a waiver of full site plan. There's no need to do a fully engineered plan for this type of use, in my opinion. So that's our recommendation, but we do need to let you know that MVD is asking for a full site plan. And the other is fire department submitted some, they talked to Robert today, didn't have a chance to put together a formal memo, but they've noted they need to inspect the trailer to ensure that they have the proper extinguishers and storage arrangements for flammables and waste, and they're able to inspect them whenever they are on site, whenever it's ready.
Okay, so it sounds good, some easy solutions from the fire department, it sounds like with the sophistication you've got in your trailer already, you probably have already tackled those questions.
Yep, we have fire extinguishers, we, we, when we come onto campus, we actually have their security and safety teams come and inspect the trailer frequently, so.
So this trailer's not a one-off thing, you guys do this in partnership across?
Yes, so we have, we have a few service vehicles now, we're in, we've expanded to Boston, so we're in, you know, MathWorks and Schneider and Boston Scientific, so big, big corporate campuses that are trying to use this as an amenity to bring talent, recruit and retain employees.
It's a great idea. My company's not big enough.
They're at?
Right by the State House, so there's lots of representatives and senators there, you could come get them.
You haven't got any parking space around here, Mr. Chairman?
Sure we do.
I was just going to say, they're at Dartmouth Hitchcock Medical Center and Dartmouth College up in, up in?
Oh, excellent. Excellent. Other comments or questions about the project? So Tim, is this, this is a modification of a previously approved, so?
This is, actually, we're considering this a waiver of full site plan, so we do need an acceptance motion and a motion for the waiver of full site plan.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the application as complete?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept the application as complete.
Nelson's got the second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Mr. Chairman, to help you, I'll make a motion that we have a waiver of a full site plan review on the basis that specific circumstances indicate the waiver will carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Is there a second for Alister's motion?
Second that.
Second by Nelson. I do want to just pause on that one to comment because of MVD's special request that we consider full site plan review, and I'm thinking about the elements that go into a full site plan review with lighting and drainage and parking and access and all of those kinds of things that we just wouldn't have any reason to look at related to this, to make a change. And so, that's why, it's not that I'm sort of brushing aside their, their view of things, and certainly I'm sensitive to the idea of spills and the wellhead protection areas, I'm sure Fidelity is as well, but the things that we would impose upon them to do with establishing their boundaries and their butters and doing all that, in addition to which I have no idea when the original Fidelity plan was approved, and there could be other innocuous changes to our site plan regulations that have occurred along the way that they would get trapped in if we pushed them to full site plan review. So I don't think either one of those things are things that I would want to do, and that's why I support the waiver. I just wanted to take a pause to put that kind of thing on the record.
I'll put it.
Comments, questions by others?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to add one additional condition to Kelly's memo.
We're still on the waiver of full site plan.
Oh, sorry, I thought we voted.
No, we didn't vote.
Oh, sorry.
Do you have any more comments on the waiver of full site?
I have no comments on that.
There we go. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining, 5-0-0 to grant the waiver of full site plan review?
Now, getting to additional things, what I would suggest is updating the fire, to add the fire department comment about inspection of the trailer and whatnot, I would also recommend that both fire and MVD be given a protocol for spills and how they're handled through the trailer itself.
I think also there should be, either in the comments or the approvals, since we've got a use here to do a maintenance trailer, but we're approving it based on the uniqueness of this maintenance trailer being fully enclosed, that there's somehow, that, that idea was captured in the notes so that 20 years from now, this isn't replaced with a different kind of maintenance trailer that doesn't meet these needs.
Or six months.
Or, yeah, six months or whatever. So, Tim, yeah, is that enough information for you to capture that kind of thing as a condition?
Could I also feel, also say that I think somewhere along the line, we have to give the rights to somebody, and I'm not sure, and I'm thinking it's probably MVD, but somewhere along the line, we have a right to inspect the trailer, and I'm not being disrespectful, sir, that to make certain that that trailer is not leaking with, you know, old age and all these things. I feel we have, there should be an inspection protocol somewhere along the line that the town has a right to inspect the trailer for, if you like, being what it says it is.
So I think that their authority probably isn't any different than inspecting anybody else to make sure that they've lived up to conditions of approval and any other service station or other use that has?
Because of the way we're going to add the language in here that the trailer must be as described by the presentation here tonight, that it's fully enclosed, et cetera, et cetera, if at any time there's a complaint or any, the town always has a right to make sure and verify compliance with conditions of approval, so I don't know that there needs to be specifically anything added, but that's the board's call, not mine.
The only reason I throw it in is, is my recollection of the DOT regulations is, whereas cars have to be inspected annually, I don't believe trailers have to be, and that's the only reason I'm tossing it up.
I agree with that notion that trailers are not inspected every year in the same way that cars are. I don't know which town agency, and you've suggested MVD, I don't know which town agency has the skills to inspect a trailer.
Well, I was really thinking of whether there's somebody?
Look underneath at the parking lot.
Somebody from the DPW would be asked to check the trailer on a basis. I'm just concerned, I'm not suggesting for one minute, but if that thing did spring a leak, we'd all be worried, especially if it got to the border.
I can provide some clarifying comments on that, namely, we actually don't rely on the trailer to store anything. The storage containers are removable containers, so it's not like there's a tank that's welded into the trailer that's holding the oil. These are just tanks that you remove, so maybe it's inspecting the tanks, but, you know, even if the trailer wore out, we're still putting it in fully sealed, you know, separate tanks inside the trailer that are removable, because we have to take them out and drop them off at, you know, each night.
That's a pretty good comment, I think.
But that doesn't, I mean, what I'm concerned about is you have, and I'm sure all the Fidelity employees have wonderful vehicles, but if you have a Fidelity vehicle comes in that's leaking oil, and it gets into your trailer, how do we know that that oil, if your trailer's in five years' time's got a rust point, it's, you can see where my mind is going, how do we know there's no possibility of oil dripping onto the road?
Well, you've got, we've got a thousand cars on the side every day.
It's dripping on the road when the car was outside.
Yeah, but he's concentrating it. Well, all right. Yeah, but he's got, I mean, it can drop around, but he's actually in the wellhead protection area. That's why I'm worried. I mean, I agree, I should worry about any Fidelity employee.
I can say with some confidence that MVD will probably be staying on top of this.
I'll, I'll let, I'll let it ride, Mr. Chairman, I'll shut up.
I, I think that you, you have found a valid point, I'm just not sure where to go with it, and I'm more inclined to sort of trust these guys to care for their site, and Fidelity doesn't want oil on the ground on their property any more than MVD does, so.
Okay.
Are there any members of the public or butters who wish to weigh in on this one? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we grant?
Hang on a second.
Oh, sorry.
There was a note in the staff memo about a food truck that comes on to the?
I was just going to ask about that when I had checked.
Property from time to time, and there is one that comes on to the property from time to time.
Not regularly.
Not regularly, three to four times a year for special occasions.
For events.
So we were prepared to designate where that would park as well, but it sounds like that's not an issue, but I didn't want?
If it's, if it's strictly for special events and not a regularly scheduled thing, I don't believe it needs to be part of the plan.
I didn't want the staff comment to go unaddressed.
No, thank you for bringing it up, and I agree with you.
As well as an ice cream truck.
Yeah. They only park long enough for the kids to come running out with their?
It obviously is well worth working at Fidelity. You get your car serviced, you get your food brought, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, thanking the applicant for their thoughts, but I make a motion, we grant final approval for this project. Subject to all the conditions in Kelly's memo of May 30th, 2018, plus the things that we've added as we've gone along.
Is there a second for Alister's motion?
I second that.
Second by, Neil, I can tell.
So do we leave eight on there? Talks about ice cream and food trucks?
No, we strike it out.
Strike it out? You didn't do that in your motion, so.
Well, it's because the board didn't determine it needs to be included, so.
Well, I would just strike it out so it's not even in there.
It would, it would have been anyway.
Oh, thank you.
Everybody's understanding that that's what the motion is, to include all the conditions except number eight, and the ones added tonight are in there.
The ones added tonight being?
The fire department approval.
Oh, the fire department. The notes regarding the fire department inspecting, and also that the trailer is as described in the presentation, the enclosed, et cetera.
All right. Any other discussion? We got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0. Hey, thanks for the presentation, I really do think it's a creative opportunity for your employees to benefit, so I applaud you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out, guys.
Fascinating.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Merrimack Parcel A LLC is the applicant and Merrimack Premium Outlets LLC is the owner. Review for consideration of an amendment to the previously approved site plan for Merrimack Premium Outlets to allow for modification of the site access driveway, which is the addition of the roundabout to the Premium Outlets Boulevard to provide access to Merrimack Park Place site. The parcel's located at 80 Premium Outlets Boulevard in the I-2 Industrial and Oxford Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, Tax Map 3C Lot 191-1. And we have a request that's received in our package that we continue this to our June 19th meeting.
Just to explain why this brief request is here, as the board knows, one of the conditions that was put on the Merrimack Park Place Mixed Use Development Site Plan was the resolution of the concerns regarding the roundabout with peer review. Because that roundabout is actually located on the Merrimack Premium Outlet Site, the Simon property, which contains all of the major outlet mall, that requires an amendment to that plan that was previously approved. The time it took to get the revisions reviewed and comments from peer review, we did not receive those comments until late today on Wednesday last week, given the fact that VHB would have needed to revise the plans, get them back to my department for us to review before Friday's packet, and knowing that I was out of the office on Friday, there was just no possible way for it to take place. So the two-week delay will give us ample opportunity to review the plans. The peer review is due, is now down to a couple of minor comments regarding signage, otherwise they are very satisfied with the revisions that have been made to the roundabout design for the two lanes, to get the access to both the Premium Outlet Site as well as the Park Place Site.
Thank you, Tim, for the explanation. We need, since this is a modification, we also don't need to deal with acceptance or any of that, we just deal with continuance.
This one would just be, yeah, we wouldn't, I wouldn't have asked you to accept the application if it was applicable tonight, but because it's an amendment to the previously approved plan, when we do talk on the 17th, or, excuse me, on the 19th, there will not be a need to actually do a formal acceptance on this one.
Okay. So the applicant's requested a continuance to our next meeting, which is two weeks hence, what's the rule of the board?
So move, Mr. Chairman, move with grant.
Move to continue to the 19th. Is there a second for Nelson's motion?
I'll continue, I'll second it, Mr. Chairman, although I have to admit, I wish there was a further modification that we put a roundabout where Premium Outlets Boulevard bet up with the industrial drive. If you spend as much, if you spend as much time sitting at, watching nothing move at that site, you don't understand why I would say that.
All right, so there's a motion and a second to continue to June 19th. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, so we'll see them on June 19th. That brings us to discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. The one that was on the agenda has been dealt with already. There is nothing else under items of concern unless?
There was nothing on the agenda, by the way.
No, it was, it was a?
Something you had planned, maybe, but there wasn't anything on?
Sure, yes, I'm sorry, I misspoke, it's, I have some extra notes.
All I would like to do is remind people that there is this meeting on the 11th of June, which is the sort of?
The NRPC roundtable.
The NRPC.
Roundtable.
Roundtable discussion, I've certainly signed up, and I think Nelson said he had.
Unfortunately, I'm now going to be in New York that day, so I'm going to have to miss it.
Well, I certainly am going, I don't know if anybody else is, but I'm saying, well, I look forward to seeing what comes out of it. Well, I look forward, I look forward to seeing what comes out of it.
Will be well represented. Under the same topic, I have another comment and request. There was a presentation on planning board basics given at NRPC on the, by the New Hampshire Municipal Association Legal Services Buckley, Steve Buckley, and I've forgotten the date of that. It was this past?
It was in May.
It was in May. What I'd like to ask of staff is that we, we, the town of Merrimack, join the, the New Hampshire Municipal.
That's, that's a question, that's a direction for him, not for me.
Okay. He's wanting you to promote him up through your boss.
It's, yeah, that is, that is an uphill climb, but I, I, it is noted and.
I, I would just like it to be a request from this board that says.
I will certainly pass that on.
We think we should be on that. We should be involved in that. We can benefit from that as board members, as far as training and education and updating on laws.
Just as an FYI, that would not happen until the next budget.
Yeah, I understand that. I understand that. I just wanted.
For Neil's benefit and for the folks at home, the New Hampshire Municipal Association is an organized group that, that creates some resources that help municipalities in areas like this. We at one time were a member. We have now probably for five years or more not been members, and there's some alternative sources for that, or there's some value judgments based on what it costs versus what you get out of it, and Nelson's suggesting that the planning board indicates some support for the idea to the town council, but it's obviously their decision to spend what I understand is significant amount of money.
Twenty or thirty thousand.
Twenty or thirty thousand dollars in dues to get access to their resources. But nevertheless, they do have some pretty good resources, but it's always, there's always choices that are made with what things cost versus what you get. Other than that, I don't think I have any more background explanation as to what the issue is. Is, is a desire, Nelson's desire seems he's expressing that this board can base some unified message, and if that's to happen, that requires some discussion and a motion for the board to do that. If it's an individual message, then Nelson's conveyed it to Tom, and I'm sure Tom can carry it along.
I would agree with Nelson, and I argued vehemently to keep it, to keep us members back when it was taken out, but some of the other council members were adamant and, and won the day to, to cut that from the budget. But I found, over my time, that it's been a useful membership to have, merely access to the legal services for some of the committees and groups to be able to get at without having to formally go through the town manager to the town council and stuff like that. It is, I think, beneficial or valuable. But, you know, there are other programs that they have. Their, their town and county magazine monthly that comes out always had really good information in it, and synopses of upcoming laws and regulations and stuff, and.
They do have some other publications. They host some conferences and teleconferences and things that I, I know that we've discussed in the past and thought, well, we wish we could go to that, and if you're not a member, it's, it's not like you pay an extra fee to go to it. You can't come.
You can't go.
You're not in the club.
As we found out firsthand a few years back.
You turned away at the door?
We, we had to tell Nelson, among others, that they weren't welcome to go. We had a former employee who did manage to go to two of the sessions, and then they realized, hey, you guys aren't members, you can't come.
And who's to blame them? You don't get things you don't pay for.
Right.
So, anyway, so what's the will of the board? You want to convey this as kind of a unified message of the board that we recommend the town council consider?
Could I suggest that you not do that tonight, but perhaps schedule this as a, an agenda item where perhaps we try to gather some information as to what the breadth of, for those that aren't familiar, what NHMA does, to give people an idea of what their programs are. I, I think it would be better than just doing it off the cuff right now, just.
It's a good thought. I thank you for that suggestion, Tim. Does it seem reasonable approach to Nelson?
Yeah.
Especially since we've got plenty of time before budget season.
So, yeah, we've got, no, no.
Okay, so.
I will note, I'll make a note that we'll have that discussion at some point.
Thank you.
Arrange it for one of the agendas where you're the one here representing, so that we've got the, the ability to have that level of discussion with you on that. I don't know when the next time that comes around on our calendar is, but.
I'll next be here in July, but we've got what looks to be a relatively busy night that night, because we'll have.
Doesn't have to be a long discussion, if you include some things in our package that we can read ahead of time.
I will see what I can do for that night.
Okay.
But you also want me to do a presentation on what I did for the school board. We've got NRPC sidewalks coming on, we've got Bowers Landing that night. We're, have a few things coming on that night.
Well, we're having a short night tonight. I did also have a separate conversation with you, just to give us, give us a 30-second update on the master plan and where we are in the process of achieving our.
Yes, as the board remembers, go back quite a few months now, we were working, making progress towards doing something with mixed-use development with the zoning ordinance. We had had a couple of workshop meetings, and I'd started working on some draft language. Then the whole publicity slash negative attention for the hotels started coming up, so I think the will of the board was to ease back on that a little bit, which we have done. In lieu of that, as I mentioned at the time, it made sense from a process and development review standpoint to finally take a look at removing the chapters on site plan regulation from our subdivision regulations and actually creating a separate document that is specific for site plans, and then having a specific set of regulations for subdivisions. I have been working on that over the course of the last four or so months. It is a daunting task, to say the least, to take what's good about what we have, as well as looking at other communities' regulations and trying to come up with a set of best practices. I am probably about 65% of the way done, trying to pull things and start editing draft language together, which I want to have a chance to review specifically with Public Works in particular, as it relates to drainage and road designs, you know, structural sections for pavement and those types of things. I'm hopeful that by fall, mid to late fall, to have some draft, or at least an update presentation given to the board as to where we stand on that. In the interim, following the separation of the site plan regulations, we'll essentially have a temporary set of subdivision regulations, which is what we have today, minus those chapters we're pulling out, and then I'd also go through the same process with the subdivision regulations, try to update and modernize those a little bit, because we have what I would call a collection of amendments to the original subdivision regulations and hasn't really had a comprehensive look at them in ever. So, that's where we stand right now. I think that we're getting, we'll get more bang for the buck from, in terms of transparency and clarity and solid expectations on both sides of the development review process, if we do this regulatory stuff first before we then go back and take a look at the mixed-use development standards.
So the comment that I'd add to that is that if you remember our master plan and keep it in mind, each section of it, whether it's environment or land use or housing or whatever it is, has transportation, utilities, has a dozen or more goals that are set out for the planning board or for other entities to consider or to advance, and the work that Tim described, in a broad sense, checks a bunch of those boxes for the individual goals, which would say things like, consider adopting a pedestrian master plan, consider adopting mixed-use development regulations, consider.
Probably one of the ones that is, if you look at natural resources and things of that nature, and what our conservation commission, they, they make the same recommendations, if you haven't noticed, all the same. It's fertilizers, it's no salt and winter maintenance, those types of things. Put them in the regulations so that we don't have to have those specifically coming as a recommendation and the board having to vote on them all the time. It's those types of things that I'm trying to gather through my seven years of employment here, the types of things that we see happen over and over again, plus the stuff I've had from the other 17 years I've been doing this.
Green, snow, pro and all that fun.
Exactly.
So, thank you for all that work, but I just wanted to sort of let everyone recognize that it met some of the individual goals that are in the master plan, quite, quite a bunch of them. Big picture-wise, we adopted our master plan in 2013. They last for 10 years, and you're supposed to work towards trying to, not always, you don't always get there, but.
Ideally, it's 10 years, but I think, given, you know, with the status of where we're at, I don't think there's been any significant changes from the community's standpoint that would require us to perhaps start looking at a complete overhaul, but there might be a discussion we have in the next year or two about maybe targeting some of the individual chapters.
Target individual chapters, that's being recommended everywhere now as a way of handling it without such a big project focused on one particular chapter or segment, transportation, planning, you know.
And just as an example, was at the New Hampshire Planners Association's Spring Conference on Friday, and the plan of the year wasn't a full master plan, it was a single individual chapter in Dover's master plan.
So, I'd just have to watch and see how that stuff plays out to make sure that it's amenable to public input, because if you start dealing with something that deals with mixed-use developments, well, it's traffic, it's utilities, it's pedestrians, it's, it's seven chapters, and so saying, well, we're only going to talk about this piece, and you should come back in six months when we talk about this other piece, isn't particularly useful to the public. But it may be that there are some areas that are good, good in bite size and standalone. Nevertheless, my point is, statutorily, you re-adopt master plans every 10 years or close to it as you can, and we're five years into ours, and so we should be making some significant process to, progress towards checking off our boxes, so that we can, in a year or two, start to look at the idea of, well, where do we go from here? What's the next step? I think the last time, the 2013 master plan, before that, our master plans were being adopted in zero years, so 2000, 2010, and all that, and we started to adopt it, we started to develop one in 2010, and it took us two years and a couple of months to get it done, so that's why we're now on the.
Just to give you the specific statutory language from RSA 674-1, which is duties of the planning board. It is, shall be the duty of every planning board established under RSA 673-1 to prepare and amend from time to time a master plan to guide the development of the municipality.
Somewhere else, there's, there is a, I don't know.
There's a, there's a general guidance. Generally guidance is, you try to do it every 10 years, but I don't believe there's any statutory language.
I don't remember either whether there was or not. I was thinking that there was, and.
Might be in the planning board handbook from OEP saying that they recommend you do it every.
It used to key off the census. That's why it was every 10 years, the US Census comes out and sort of establishes a new population baseline for the town. A new baseline, yeah. And that was the original key to doing.
I actually just found it. RSA 674-3, Master Plan Preparation, Part Two, revisions to the plan are recommended every five to 10 years.
Anyway, I want to make sure that we're paying attention to it and that it's, it's a document that guides what we're doing. We've also, at different times in the past, when some members of the public had opinions about particular projects, we sometimes had some discussion with them about decisions that were made as a part of a master plan that guided regulations, that guided a project, and some of the things that they were in favor of or opposed to, really had to start way back at that beginning point to decide whether you were going to do mixed use or whether you were going to do commercial west of the turnpike and all that. Anyway, enough of that. Thank you, Tim, for the update on the master plan. I don't have any other discussion or other items of concern to discuss. Do any of you all? So, okay, let's move on to the approval of the minutes of May 15th, 2018. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve the minutes as submitted, of May 15th.
Motion to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
I'll second that. I couldn't find anything, I couldn't find anything wrong, Mr. Chairman, so I, I'm happy to second them.
Excellent. Motion to approve the minutes properly seconded as submitted. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? One abstention, so that is 401 with Neil Anketell abstaining. So those minutes are approved. That brings us to a consideration of adjourning.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second? I'll catch you as soon as we're done. We don't have a second yet. Second by Neil? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, so we're adjourned.